At this time, I would like to call to order the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Harper-Joy one School District Board of Education. Can I have a roll call, please?
Here.
Present.
Uh, your vote?
Here.
This is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time of republic participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Any district resident or parent of a currently enrolled student wishing to speak should have filled out a card located on the signing table and given to our secretary. Are there any comments tonight or not? At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Bluey, who'll introduce our Rossman students to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. We have Ms. Ms. Greer and Libby here and Luke here for our.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, could Miss Greer give you talk this to my ear and for us? Thank you so much. Thank you, kids, for that. Our next item on the agenda is consider approval of agenda. The agenda notes in the board's mission of we will support our community through dedicated governance, leadership, and stewardship so that our students achieve. It also states our values and expectations as a board in governing our meetings. The purpose of the agenda approval is twofold. The first reason is to verify that public notice has been given according to state statute nineteen point eight four. Mrs. Hoffman, has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yeah.
Thank you. The second reason for approval of the agenda is to consider tabling an item or to rearrange the order of events. Um, is there anything that needed to be reorganized? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as it's.
I'll second.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four tonight is our presentation of student excellence, which is tonight presented by Rossman Elementary School. So, Dr. Bluey, back to you.
Thank you again. This evening, we have Mr. Boyle and Rossman. Andy Buck and LeFolmes, Dana Kaye, Laura, Jackie Keelish, Stephanie Meyer, Hopper, Rory Summer. Good evening. Hi there. From the Jake Boyle, the elementary music teacher at Rossman, and today we have some students here to demonstrate, um, the choir chimes that were purchased with PTO. Um, so great. Thanks to them and thanks to the board for the approval to purchase those as well. So, um, we're going to do a little rendition of our Rossing School song. So, if anyone has any questions for those students or for me about the chimes and how we use it, right? What we do, there's one way is what we saw here. So, as an accompaniment to singing, there's also, um, you can do kind of a play a melody, right? So, one at a time, or, um, it's used in reading, music also, um, uh, reading, you know, pictures on the waves, um, but also it's a great kind of step up instrument for a lot of things we have in the classroom right now. Um, so they're actually, you know, the same, um, quality, the same grade dimensions that, um, you find in, um, you know, adult ensemble. That, you know, so it's pretty, we're very grateful for the, um, for the purchase, so.
How many bells do you have total?
Total, oh gosh, I need to count. Um, I don't have an answer for you. I do have, it's a wide range, so we have, um, you know, as you can see, Peyton has one of the larger ones there. They do go, they, you know, can get very large ones. You have to, like, wheel in and out of car and, like, strike them out and stuff, but, um, yeah, we have a good number, so.
Is there a difference between the colors there? Do they do something different?
Our. Right. Okay. What's another one we can start? Jack, Jack. So, we can mix the, um, the other ones for, yeah, so.
Okay.
Kids, how do you like playing them? What's the hardest part about it? Right, or like matching with your teammates who are doing the same note at the same time? Very cool. Any other questions?
I love them. Those are so cool. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you so much. Number four, yes. I know. Yes. Ask Natalie. Be careful with them. Yeah.
Oh, that's nice.
Get with them. Oh, the bell. Didn't you see the bell beeping? I know how to play this. You do it. That's what we need a bell to start our meetings. Come on. Instead of a napal, I should just use the bell for the lesson. Thank you. That was a good thing. Thank you so much. Very nice. Thank you so much for sharing. Need them in there. Well, you guys are fine. I'm stereo. That's nice. Just say no parents and students, you're all welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. I can't say it will be as entertaining as what the kids have just provided for us, but we will continue on with our meeting and you're more than welcome to stay. If you don't want to stay, we're more than welcome to leave as well. There will be no judgment. Thank you all, though, for letting your kids come to present to us tonight. Thank you. You, Mrs. Radley will be presenting later on, so you could stay at Lincoln Center too if you wanted. All right. Item number five is citizen's celebration, which we don't have any, so we're moving on to number six, which is the board president's report. Um, tonight, we just have a couple of things. We had a board candidate forum that was last week. Yeah, I'm sorry. My days are running together and I cannot quite recall. I wanted to thank, um, everyone who put time and energy into hosting that forum. We had three high school students who came and moderated that forum, which did a great job. And so I really just wanted to thank everyone for doing that. I think it's really important that the district hosts those opportunities for us to hear from our candidates. It's really important that election for our school board seat, um, is coming up in April first. So, reminder to get up and vote. Um, and then, secondly, we do have a unique situation currently in our board, which is that we have one seat up for reelection, which is a three-year term. And then due to Mr. Banky moving out of our district, we have a vacancy. A vacancy and we, we, I've had people reach out to me and Dr. Villalobos has said people reach out to her asking why it's just not a two-for-two situation. But this isn't a full term, so there's a special election that will be held. We're going to have a special board meeting April seventh. Anyone who's interested in filling the vacant seat left by Mr. Banky can fill out some documentation and deliver it to the board, to the district building by Thursday. And then on April seventh, we will meet and that will be after the election and we'll select the replacement for this vacant seat, which will just fill the rest of his term. It won't be a three-year term.
No, and it will actually just be one year.
I apologize.
And then that person will, if they're interested in being considered for a second term, then they'll do the election.
Got it. Thank you.
And it would be for another one-year term, and then it'll go back into a three-year cycle.
The timing was weird on this, having it correlate with this, but this is how our policy is, and that's why it is done the way it is. Um, and lastly, uh, Ms. Shrunk had something she wanted to, to mention, so I'm gonna turn it over to her real quickly.
Um, so at the, um, convention, we always have a school board convention in January, um, and we had some really cool speakers. Um, one gentleman was actually, he's a superintendent, Dr. Joe Sanfilippiyo, who I probably am not saying the name right. Anyway, he had two books that, um, Dr. Villalobos and I were interested in, so I, on behalf of the board, thought it was important, um, to buy these books. So, I did buy them and read them, and now I'm giving them to the district so that they can share with their teams. They were very, um, informative and it taught me a lot about education more than I knew and how to be good leaders. And so I hope that you guys all get a chance to read them because they were wonderful. Um, and secondly, I was at the Lincoln Fund Fair, I'm sorry, I've already missed your fund fair, it was out of town for Rossman's, but, um, at Lincoln, um, they always do art, um, by students. And, um, so I bid on one and I won, um, but I had no room in my house, so this is also being dedicated to the district. So, you guys can put it in the district office somewhere.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much.
You.
Does it say what student it's by, or is it by a class of students?
It says twenty seventeen to, I don't really understand that. Um, so no, I do not know, um, what.
It's cute.
I think someone at some point went to Lincoln.
Kindergarten.
I think this was a kindergarten. There is no, there's, yeah, there's no year. No, I think that's just supposed, that's just a warning. So, yeah. Um, so I apologize. I don't know what year I took, but.
I know someone who works at Lincoln, maybe we can find out. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shrunk. That's awesome. Um, we're moving right along with number seven, which is the district administrator's report, so I'll pass it over to Dr. Villalobos.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Welk. So, like Ms. Welk mentioned, with our two different situations regarding board member, uh, replacement, one with the election. The second is for, um, the board member vacancy. We do have that special meeting coming up on April seventh. It will be at six P M. and the board will hear from interested parties, and then the board members will be making a decision that night as well. Um, then the board reorganizational meeting will occur in April. By that time, we will be back to a five-member board, and so included in your packet, I did include the policies surrounding what does the role of the president do? Vice president, treasurer, and clerk. So that way, as you prepare for nominations next month, you're aware of what each of those roles is. And I always say it, but I will say it again here before we even get to that point in time. Uh, legally, we must call for nominations three times, so if someone is nominated and I call two additional times, it doesn't mean we're dissatisfied with the person that was put forward. It's that we legally have to call three times. And then, um, after the president is elected, then they will take over for the remainder of the reorganization. I do anticipate that April board meeting, like I say, just because of all of the things that occur in the spring and given the fact that we'll have, um, the board reorganization, we'll have a teacher and support staff of the year, and we also have another additional, um, kudos to give out or a celebration to give out that we'd like to do at that meeting as well. Uh, then I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Shrunk, who participated in a day at the Capitol last week.
Yes, so, um, every year, um, W S A B, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, um, has what they call a day at the Capitol, where you can go to the Capitol, um, as a board member and meet with your, um, your senators and your, um, just your party in general. So, we started off in the morning with a legislative panel, which was Senator Romaine Quinn. Um, he is in charge of Joint Finance Committee, or he's a Joint Finance Committee member. Um, and then Senator Chris Larson, who is also a Senate for the Education Committee. And then Republican Joel Kitchens, um, who was the Assembly Education Committee Chair. And then Republican Joe Sheenan, who is Assembly Education Committee Member. So those four talked, um, for about an hour with us, just discussing what's going on, um, obviously at the Capitol. Um, their concerns with, obviously, Evers' requests, um, for his budget and what they thought, um, could happen or would happen. And the key takeaway, I would say, if you're at all concerned about, um, what's going on in legislator, um, legislative and what's happening with education in general, please reach out to your, um, constituents, um, your leaders there. They want to hear from you. They want to know how you feel about things. So, that was a really nice overview. And then we had Brian, uh, Pankey. He's the state budget director for, um, for Evers. And he went over a few things on, um, what Governor Evers, um, would like to do in his budget, which includes, I'll read all of this, but, um, obviously, if you do not know, we have a four-point-three billion-dollar balance surplus in our government right now in, in Wisconsin. Um, right now, we have two billion in rainy day fund. Um, right now, we take seven-hundred-and-sixty million in tax collections. That's our current law. Um, we'll probably get another one-point-eight billion over the next two years. Uh, what we try to, what he's trying to do is he's trying to get the, um, trying to get everything approved, obviously, when the budget comes in in July. We've been told from all of the people we talked to at the Capitol, there's no way that they will come to an agreement, so we will not have our budgets, um, July first. Uh, so what that means is Wisconsin is, um, they don't do what, uh, what the government, what the federal government does. There's no shutdown. They just go back to whatever the current funding is this year. So, if they don't pass the budget in time, we just keep status quo on what we already have this year, and that's what we plan to use, which is most likely what will happen. Um, then I met in the afternoon. We got to go see some of our representatives. Um, so I attended meetings with Arrowhead, Merton, Jefferson, and, um, the Union High School here in town. We met with Daniel Fine, Chris Kapanga, Barbara Didrich, and Jim, I'm never gonna say his name right, but P.
P. Varchuk.
Thank you. He was, um, the new one that, um, when the, uh, revamping, uh, was changed, now he's one of our, um, people. So, our four main discussions that day were special education funding. We want sixty percent increase, um, from what we have now. Most of those, um, Senator said absolutely not, so we'll see what happens. But no one was in favor of that type of an increase. We were looking at spendable resources to avoid annual referendums that schools seem to face. Uh, we were also looking at, um, a couple of the, um, board members at the other buildings, um, or Arrowhead and Merton specifically wanted incentives for consolidation of school districts and schools. They also wanted, um, to be part of the state healthcare plan, which is not available for all schools at this time, um, unless you pay a huge surplus charge. So, they were talking about how it's not really fair for those larger schools that they can't have some kind of better healthcare, um, programs for, um, all districts. Um, in general, it was a really good meeting. Um, I was glad I was able to attend, so thank you for approving me to go. Um, and again, I think the key takeaway is you just have to be involved, and just at a local level, it's not enough to help support our school system. So, being in front of your legislators is really key, so I appreciate it being able to be there, being your spokesperson, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shrunk. So then, uh, the next thing that I wanted to share was legislative updates, and Ms. Shrunk mentioned several of them, so I will eliminate some of that from what I was going to share. Um, however, the things that came up at the most recent legislative meeting I attended was that Act Ten, um, is still up in the air, and they expect that that won't be resolved until after the Supreme Court election. I don't think that that's a surprise. Um, we know that there, this is the biennial budget year, and so with that, uh, things are usually delayed. So, we're anticipating that the budget will be determined no sooner than August, and so that's always fun for Mr. Majeris to try and build a budget when we don't know what that budget looks like. Um, we also met with Senator Fine and a few of the things that he said in terms of where could we push for additional funding. It was special education, it was mental health, and then it was also to continue to ask for an increase to the revenue limit floor. And so we do, we are a low-spending district, and so that does impact us. It does not benefit every district in the state, but we are one of the ones that are, uh, that would benefit from that. Um, they will be having four listening sessions beginning in mid to late April. And then the bills that I have been giving you updates on throughout the year, the two that, or the two or three that either continue to stay or have risen to the surface. One is the, the cursive bill again, um, continues to come to the top. Athletics has been another introduction. And then, um, the third one would be the increase in accountability, uh, which is the one that I referred to a couple of months ago as well. And then the last thing is just that with all of the changes going on, we are monitoring the U.S. Department of Ed situation to determine what our next steps will be, if there is anything. So, right now, we are not doing anything, but we are simply monitoring, um, to make sure that we don't have to respond with anything later on. And then as I move into district updates, uh, the very first one is a donation that we received at Lincoln Elementary School. It was an anonymous donation, and, uh, I have to laugh because, um, all donations that are two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or more need to come to the school board. Uh, there's a different grading for approval, so this did not meet that threshold, but I do need to bring it to the board. It was a donation of two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. So, just squeaked in, and it was for a situation that occurred at Lincoln decades ago, decade ago. About ten to twelve years ago, someone did something naughty, and they, um, paid restitution now. They did some research and they apologized, and so it was an anonymous donation, and very thoughtful of them to come back ten to twelve years later and apologize for what they had done. So, uh, and now everyone gets to publicly hear about that because they were just above the threshold. Um, the next thing that I wanted to share is forward exam testing. We do have a month for our forward exam, and it's always, uh, it straddles spring break. And so I was at Lincoln today. I know that Mr. Navarre and Mr. Handlin were talking about their testing, so they've already started. I know that Dr. Rogatzka has already started because she was kind enough to rearrange some things for me, and the same is true of Rossman. So, if you have students in grades three through eight, they are the lucky ones that get to participate in this testing. And if they are in grades four or eight, extra lucky because we also assess science and mathematics. So, um, we want to just make sure that families know that kids should be getting a good night's sleep all the time, but especially during this testing window, as well as eating breakfast, bringing nutritious snacks, things like that. Okay? Uh, and then the last thing is our Neola policy, policy update. So, you know that these come about twice a year. So, uh, Ms. Navarre and I just finished meeting with our Neola representative last week, and she had, she's almost ready for me to share everything with you. But that'll give you about six weeks to review any policy changes or updates before we get to the April board meeting. We do have some new policies, so just a reminder that our new policies require two readings, so we will not take action on the new policies next month. It'll be a first reading there. All of the revisions I will be asking you to take action on. And then any administrative guidelines or technical revisions are simply an update report from me to you, not necessarily. So, if you do have any questions, I would ask that you reach out to me as soon as you start reviewing things, because the chances are, if you have a question, someone else will have a question, and then I can make sure I get you that information before we get to the April board meeting. And that concludes my report today.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, we're moving on to the discussion portion of the meeting. Our first, um, part here is a spotlight on learning. So, we're talking about literacy in physical education. And I'm happy that Mrs. Radley will be here to share how literacy was incorporated into physical education class. Or Dr. Bluey, did you?
And you can cover it all, yeah.
Okay.
Just Radley's here, she incorporates, uh, physical education and literacy. I think last year, during Read Across America, it was a panel of, you're, now we'll get to see if, um, a different, shooting a different money.
Thank you very much for, uh, allowing me to speak tonight. Uh, I am talking about literacy and P E, um, and how I incorporated during Read Across America Week. Uh, I started this around twenty eighteen, where I kind of saw some ideas floating around, uh, different FIAID groups, and I was like, I could, I could apply this to my classroom. Um, so twenty nineteen was my first year that I put this into play. Um, I had ten stations set up on my side of the gym. Uh, students loved it. They were engaged. Uh, it correlated with Dr. Seuss books. Um, so the following year was twenty twenty, which was an interesting year to begin with. Um, right before we went on to spring break, I, this week, we had, um, all classes participate. So, my classes and the other P E teachers' classes all got to participate to align with a whole school-wide, uh, participation, uh, that they got to be involved in it, uh, together. Um, and then went to spring break, came back and, or, sorry, we didn't come back. We were in COVID teaching, um, so that following year, we had hybrid students where I was teaching students in the gym and online. Uh, so I had kind of brought what I had from home, and then I applied these stations to my hybrid learners as well, so that was different. Um, but then this year, it's my seventh year total, uh, running these stations with, for the whole school of Rossman. So, physical literacy is something new that has been applied to FIAID recently, so it's having the ability to move with competence and competence in a variety of physical activities, which is based off of Shape America's definition, where we, um, have our standards for our curriculum. Um, why is this important? It helps develop positive attitudes and habits towards physical activity, improve academic performance, and helps with cognitive and social skills. So, last week, we had literacy PD, and our speaker from C S six was talking about how to gauge students' interests and how their background knowledge can hopefully help, um, apply their interest to what they're reading. Um, so when I had kids coming into the gym last week, or during Dr. Seuss week, they were seeing the station cards on gym wall, and they were pointing at the book covers, and they were like, wow, Mr. Slinsky just read this book to us. Like, that's so cool that you're bringing it to our gym and that we get to do an activity with that. So, that was something kind of cool to hear and see that the kids were applying it from their classroom into the gym, which is nice. So, students are able to participate in twenty different Dr. Seuss-themed stations for the week. I have twelve of his books featured within the classroom, and each station has a station card with either a page or the book cover that the book is referring to or the activity for students to read before performing the mentioned activity.
Press refresh and see if that helps.
Press refresh and see if that helps.
Alright, so this was gonna be a time lapse of my family. Alright, so it's gonna be a time lapse of my family and I coming in on the weekends. They are a huge support and a huge help for getting everything set up for the week. Um, I honestly couldn't do it without them because having everything ready to go on a Monday morning, uh, takes a little bit of pressure off of me. That, you know, it's all set up, ready to go, and I get to have my girls come in and practice the stations, and I can kind of listen and learn as to what they're doing and if I need to change or modify anything. We can just go back to the slideshow. Um, so something that, if you are involved in my classroom, I like to get you involved as well. So I have a lot of paraprofessionals that are super good about participating, helping out. Um, so as you can see, some staff members getting involved. The students feed off of the adults' energy in the room, so if you see the support or paraprofessional just kind of hanging out, sitting or standing by the wall, I feel like kids are reading that and feeding off of that, so. I love that the staff come in, they're participating, they're engaged, and we all have a couple smiles and laughs as we're going. And then we had a unknown friendly competition of who could balance on the beam better. They didn't know this was actually happening, so. Uh, Mrs. Klein was in, participating with, in front of her class, walking the beam, and then I had to have Dr. Bowie participate as well. Right, who's following the leader? So the next couple of videos are just examples of what the students are doing when, with the book that it is relating to, so. This one is from the Sneeches. Students are underhand throwing the beanbag, trying to land one in each hula hoop, and then there's a picture of the Sneeches taped to the floor, so they're putting the stars on the Sneeches. Then I have If I Ran the Circus, so they're doing a couple different circus tricks, spinning the plate on the stick, and then attempting to juggle with the scarves. This is one that, as I'm across the gym, I have kids with a girl that's spinning the plate on the stick. They like come, hopefully, walking, not running with the stick, but wa- walking over to me, demonstrating that they can do it, they got it, just super excited, not something that we typically work on in the PE classroom, so. A little bit outside the box for that one. And we have ten apples up on top, so I have red, green, yellow beanbags spread out on the ground. They are on their scooters, holding a plate in their hand, and then trying to stack the ten apples up on top. Next is the Cat in the Hat comes back. So these two students are Thing One, Thing Two. They're trying to toss a stain from thing to thing, and then if they do successfully catch it, they step back to the next, uh, colored circle on the ground to complete the level. And the Footbook is working on different balancing skills, so they, these two are showing their balancing acts on the Balance Board Masters. Then we have One Fish, Two Fish, Red Fish, Blue Fish. This one was kind of like a remix this year. I tried to add a fishing line to a yardstick. Mrs. Tower helped me out, get a little creative with that. But unfortunately, the fishing line did not last all week. It's a little bit of a struggle. I gotta rethink it for next year. Um, so we went back, but it's tried and true, our deck rings tossing with the jumping bands, uh, to catch the fish in the ocean, for the water. Um, and then something that I like to do for most of my units is a recap video. So I'm, during the week, once kids know what to do at each station, they're rotating through all twenty. I'm taking pictures, taking videos, and then I put a movie trailer together for them. So, once I do have them all complete, this is what they'll see. They get a good laugh of the Cat in the Hat cat on their teacher. Um, and then they get to watch a little movie trailer, um, showcasing what they did in the gym and how they were physically active and the book that it tied to. Um, and it also relates to reading, because they're reading what I, um, am putting up on the screen. So I do have one put together for you guys from all of my classes, so enjoy. The stuff here in real life, I feel like, very helpful. Thank you, then, Mrs. Rightly. Um, our number two here on discussion is the administrative report from Food Service Update. So Mrs. Splitter will, Ms. Splitter will provide a brief overview of those updates for us.
Hi, everybody. Um, just a few things tonight. Um, we, for Read Across America, did a special themed, uh, menu at the elementary schools. That was also the National School Breakfast Week celebration as well, that theme this year was Clue Into School Breakfast. Um, so that was a fun little treat for the students. They seemed to all enjoy that. Um, the food supply chain is stable. The only thing that I've been seeing is just, um, the produce, imported produce tends to be trending a little bit higher right now, but otherwise, things are pretty stable. Um, we did apply for an equipment grant for Rossman, uh, through DPI to replace the old combination, um, oven slash steamer up there that we purchased in two thousand and eleven, so hopefully we will be selected for that to get a new steamer up there. Um, and then otherwise, just some stats, uh, for the year so far, uh, with breakfast, uh, throughout the whole year through January, we've served sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-six meals. Um, averages out about a hundred and seventy-five a day, and then for lunches, we have served in our three schools, sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two. And with our three satellite schools included, that number goes up to eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-one. So we're averaging around eight hundred a day for lunches.
Those are big numbers.
About to give participation up, but it's pretty good for now.
Any questions?
Um, I think the only question I just have is, you know, how are the kids, uh, obviously weren't here the year before, so you don't have a lot of, uh, numbers probably in, you know, are there more or less kids based on the different foods that, you know, and the vendors we're using now versus last year? Are you seeing, or do you know any trends, um, with your program or the vendors we're using versus last year's vendors?
Well, the vendors are currently still the same. It'll be next year that we're moving to the new vendors, so I'll be curious to see that as well. Um, as far as, like, participation data, I'd have to look back and see what that trend is. Um, I haven't looked so far, but I can take a look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, we're still serving two choices at the elementary schools. Um, again, Central Middle School's a little bit luckier, uh, the staff there is able to, um, provide five or six different choices, depending on, uh, how much food is left over from, uh, different meals or, um, so they get to a chance to, uh, re-serve some of, of those choices there. They also have a cold lunch type choice. Um, I mean, again, I, I, I've spent quite a bit of time up there because of staffing um, shortages, so again, we've had a couple of people out on some longer-term breaks, so I try to pitch them when I can. And, again, the, the food selection is excellent, everything. Uh, I've tried a, a bunch of the, the items. Um, again, having a fresh fruits and vegetable selection there and a bar for them to take vegetables and fruits, and then to get one of the five or six choices, especially at Central Middle School, which I think is a little bit more difficult because they're a little more picky, I think. Um, again, I think Sarah and the staff are doing a great job there, and so, um, certainly there's favorites. Um, Sarah sent an email out about, uh, what was the?
Soft pretzels and cheese, very, very popular. I, we brought in a thousand pretzels, and we've gone through almost all of them in two days.
So.
And they're a special item, so I can't get any more this week, but they will happen next month.
We are serving a different pizza product this year that seems to be pretty favorable. Um, again, so as we made tweaks and Sarah's kind of doing her own thing, taking over from the previous leadership, I think, again, it's going pretty well, and if students are not finding enough to eat as they are taking our hot lunch choices, you know, there, there's blame on the students, I think, because there's so many choices, and with the fresh fruits and vegetables and things like that, there's just, there's certainly not a shortage in terms of things they can eat. So, yeah, pretty happy about that, and as we'll talk about here, upcoming, uh, there's another um, administrative step that we want to take to even help us manage the food service program a little bit better and easier.
Sarah, remind me, no salad bar. I know there used to be, and then COVID happened, and so there isn't like a full salad bar, right? There's, like, they can't choose all their salads and fixings.
They can.
Okay, that is bad. Okay.
Our next item of discussion is the District Facilities Package for the twenty-five, twenty-six update. Annually, the Board approves the Facilities Maintenance Package, but with referenda construction and other challenges, there is not a recommendation at this time for any major facilities maintenance besides the already approved replacement of the Rossman bleachers. So just a reminder to everyone, this would be the time we'd be talking about all that, but you're not going to be talking about all that. So, with that, yes, any comments?
I, I would just say, as an update to our facilities, uh, Mr. Majeris and I were on a call with Myron Construction today about a groundbreaking event in May, so everyone, please stay tuned for that. More details will follow. Um, and then Myron confirmed for us on March eleventh that both Rossman and Central's drawings were out for bid. And then it was last week, Monday, that things went to, um, committee here in Hartford, and I don't.
Planning Commission. So, the two major, the two major structural additions have to go to, um, planning commission. Those are the, the tearing down and the replacement of the Rossman canopy, and then the Lincoln addition. So both of those projects, um, were in front of the planning committee. PRA representatives were there, Mr. Carroll and I were also both there, and, um, again, uh, plenty of information provided to the, to the commission. They didn't have any questions, and it passed, um, by unanimous decision there, so we're on the way.
No, not for right now. We just, we continue to have regular construction meetings, pretty much once a week, um, maybe once every week and a half or so, and, yeah, we're clipping along. I will say that Myron commended us today that, um, our district has made a lot of quick decisions, which has helped us uh, and will continue to help us as we move forward versus other districts who also pass referenda, uh, but are lagging in terms of the work that they've completed, so I think we're positioned really well, which is wonderful.
Okay, number eight here is our district business, so we're getting into our action items for tonight. Item number one is the Hartford Elementary Education Association and School Board Exchange of Initial Proposals, Set Ground Rules Future Meeting Dates and/or Offer to Ratify. In accordance with one eleven point seven zero four CN two Wisconsin statutes, the exchange of the initial contract proposals between Hartford Elementary Education Association, or the HEA, and the Hartford Jacklin School District is to take place here in open session.
We've been meeting with Dr. Viallose and Mr. Majeris monthly basically, and, um, I think we've come to an agreement, I think we'll see that our offer is exactly the same as yours.
Wonderful.
Have any questions?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
You got any questions for Mr. Ralph? Is there a motion?
I motion to approve and ratify the initial offer of the HEA as presented.
I'll second. I have a roll call, please. Barb?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll get you signed copy, Bob, then, and then, um, take it to your group and then.
Item number two is the Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This agreement is for a cooperative made up of sixty-three Wisconsin school districts and enables purchasing volume for price leverage with vendors. The agreement will replace contracts with separate prime food, bread, and milk vendors, but the district may choose a separate produce vendor. The co-op has solid financial standing, currently maintaining two years of operating expenses in the reserve. Is there a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative Agreement.
I'll second.
Now we'll have some discussion.
Sure.
Mr. Majeris?
So, again, the intent of, the intent of this is, um, twofold. One, um, purchasing and procurement is, um, a time-consuming, um, kind of difficult thing for an individual district to go through. Um, this cooperative is one of the biggest in the state. It encompasses, again, a lot of schools across state, not necessarily just um, southeastern Wisconsin. Um, Ms. Flitter has experience in this co-op. Her former school was a part of this co-op. Again, with our relationship with Tahoe, um, we didn't need that, our buying power and kind of the support that we needed to, um, have vendors and maintain those agreements with them, and, uh, order product um, was handled by them. The, the benefit to this group is there are, um, administrative staff hired by the group to go through and, um, negotiate contracts and fill out a lot of the procurement documentation that we need for, to have on hand for the district. That'll be reviewed, such as dur- during an administrative review. So, um, it provides, again, a lot of operational support. Um, sixty-three districts, as we talked about. So the, the, what we need to do is we need to pass a resolution to join, and then we need to approve, um, the sixty-six oh three agreement because, um, the, um, one of the districts is in charge of, um, taking care of the financial type issues. Middleton Cross Plains School District is the one that's kind of the. Middleton Cross Plains School District is the one that's kind of the fiscal agent for the group. Um, they've been doing that now for several years, this co-op's been in existence for about ten or so. We will pay it uh an administrative um fee, three hundred dollars uh to be part of the co-op. And then uh the rest of the administrative fees are paid through the vendor agreements with the co-op as a whole, based on our purchasing, so if you flip to um, I heard one of the comments or questions was about the page that says twenty-five, twenty-six proposed annual budget. This is the operating uh revenues, expenses for the co-op itself, not necessarily the individual um schools and all of their purchasing and things like that. Uh, again, they do have two years over three hundred thousand worth of operating reserves that they've accumulated before us joining. Um, they plan to distribute one year of those funds, it's wildly um excessive probably. So they've come up with some methodology that they're going to distribute some of the excess monies to the schools that have been in the co-op, based on their length of time, their size, their purchasing and things like that. But should a- again, still leave us between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand in terms of operating reserves. So you can see there that they plan to eat into that reserve by four thousand dollars. Um, again, not a concern to me necessarily. I'd rather them see that, do that, see them do that for that small amount than have to raise the the prices thirty dollars or fifty dollars or whatever the case may be. Um, again, plenty of reserves there to work with, so you can see administrative fees paid um from the vendors to the the co-op and the fiscal agent, then our membership dues and interest on the money that they carry. Purchase services, so again, there, they do have some staff that are actually making all of this happen, uh doing the orders, um taking care of the documentation and things, there's member meetings and trainings that happen with all the districts and just some general operating expenses, you know, um materials and such. Uh, we are fortunate, I think, to have Ms. Glorioso from the high school being on the executive board of that, so not only a close neighbor and being able to bounce things off of her just as being a close neighbor, but also get some insight, again, um into the workings of the co-op. And so Sarah and I actually have spent multiple times, Sarah and Monica have talked, Sarah and I and Monica have talked um as recently as last week. And so, the timing of this, we need to get this in and back to the co-op um by April, and because our April meeting is so late, we needed to get this in now so that um they have documentation that we have an agreement in place, they've already approved our group to be a member, so it's not a it's not a um decision-making thing at this point, it's just documenting our joining of the co-op.
So to join the co-op, the dues for the year, and it's only a one-year agreement, are three hundred dollars. You guys have any idea of what you're estimating our savings to the district to be by using this group buy? Obviously, there's the other costs to the district is the food that we need to purchase, which we'd be purchasing regardless. Are we anticipating like lower fees on foods through some of these group buying power, I guess?
So what I, what I'd say is, we, first of all, we haven't seen their newest order guide, so some of that's a little bit hard to tell. We can see that we've been given their kind of current buying guide, the prices are relatively similar, I would say. We do have more opportunity and different um opportunities to buy because of the um food service vendor that will be joining, so it's Gordon, right? So, um, not that our vendor is, current vendor is doing a bad job, it's just a holdover from Tahoe and again, the the place that they wanted to use, again, I think that we'll find with Gordon that our selection will be actually a little bit better. And again, just some of the management type things, that that's where we'll pick up the savings for sure, is in the management, the time and effort that it takes to do some of the things, so we can focus more on, again, menu planning and prep and actually serving food. Some administrative stuff that.
Searching for the best deal around, and he'll be there, yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Um, just on the the food side, um, do you know, I I mean, I'm familiar with Gordon, um based on my regular job, but uh is the plan also to incorporate more homegrown, local grown, like what's their program for that? Do they work on bringing in local produce, do they partnership at all, you know?
We do have some flexibility in that, so again, just because they're um recommending or or using a uh a prime vendor and then the the bread and milk, um especially with produce, we have a little bit of flexibility there so that we can kind of get the things that we want or need, so um we may maintain both vendors, we may against which to be Marchese, we might end up staying with Catalano, so we'll set to, again, wait and see how that goes, see what both guides look like next to each other, so there'll be some plannings, things that happen in the summer, so we have time to address that.
There's no other discussion, can I roll call vote, please? Barb?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number three is the district technology package for the twenty-two-five, twenty-six school year. The handout summarizes the annual technology package proposal. This includes annual software renewals, capital equipment needs, and instructional technology needs. The district compares a long-range technology plan to keep expenditures as consistent as possible. The package does include the Chromebooks, which was fifty-three thousand three hundred twenty dollars, which we approved last month in February. So it's in here, but it's being removed from the total, just so that we're not confused by that. Um, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six district technology package at a cost not to exceed three hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars.
I second.
Any discussion?
Just like to thank the IT department, and you guys do a fantastic job really watching the money and what you'll need for the following year, and I just think you do a great job, so thank you for that.
And what we need before it completely runs out, like it's not, even though the copiers, it's like, it's already printed, how many millions of pages? It's there, but it's still running, so it's good to have a backup ready before it costs us more further down the road, so. Good, can I roll call vote? Barb?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
And I say aye.
Periods. Item number four is the technology agreement with Aaron's School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The recommendation is a one-year contract to provide tech consulting services for Aaron's School District and includes a five percent increase from this school year. Is there a motion?
I motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six district technology package at a cost not to exceed.
Oh, then the next one. Number four, sorry.
Number four, sorry.
They're all technology, so it gets confusing.
Yeah, motion to approve twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six technology agreement with Aaron's School District.
I'll second. Questions, comments? Can I roll call, please? Barb?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is another technology agreement, this time with Herman Neosho Rubicon School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The recommendation is, again, a one-year contract to provide tech consulting services for, and I apologize, it says Aaron's School, but this one is actually Herman Neosho Rubicon School District, and includes a five percent increase from this school year. And I have a motion.
I motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six technology agreement with Herman Neosho Rubicon School District.
I'll second.
Barb?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number six is participation in the Walgreens Savings Club Litigation Class Action Lawsuit. Bear with me. The Walgreens Class Action Settlement provides a one-hundred-million-dollar settlement fund for individuals, third-party peers, and health insurers who pay for prescription drugs from Walgreens. The funds will be distributed based on a court-approved plan of allocation. Settlement funds will cover attorney's fees, litigation expenses, notice and administration costs, and service awards before being distributed to eligible payments. A fairness hearing to approve the settlement and allocation plan is scheduled for September tenth, twenty-twenty-five at twelve fifteen PM Central Standard Time in Chicago. Claimant's may receive service awards of up to five thousand dollars for individuals, fifteen thousand dollars for fund entities. To receive a payment, payments, this includes Hartford Joint One, should the board approve this action item, must submit a claim form by April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. That's why this is on this agenda, because that is the end date in which we have to submit this by. Administration is recommending joining the class action suit, and the opt-in fee is eighteen percent of any amount recovered by the district. To clarify, the opt-in fee is so that we don't have to do any of the paperwork for it, Optum is going to do it for us. And if they win anything, they get a percentage of it, but it's more than we would have if we did nothing at all.
Yeah, Optum.
We need a motion first.
I motion to approve the participation in Walgreens Saving Club Litigation Class Action Lawsuit.
Thank you, Barb.
I'll second, thank you.
Optum is uh uh one of the sub-companies of United Healthcare. Um, Optum does a lot of um drug uh prescription benefit manager type roles, again, if you remember, we moved away from Optum, but since they were our provider at the time, they have all the data and they're, again, offering to do the work for us. We did get this email within the last week, unfortunately, and again, because of the tight window, we have to bring it to you and had to um make some amendments to the to that agenda, but um we would recommend participating since there's little to no risk to the district for participating.
Great. Can I roll call vote, please? Barb?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
And I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven is collaboration with Hartford Union High School for Transition Readiness Grant. HHS has received a transition readiness grant from DPI to offer job opportunities for students with disabilities aged eighteen to twenty-one. HHS has four students interested in working in our district, there was no cost to our district, and the grant expires at the end of the school year. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the collaboration with Hartford Union High School for their transition readiness grant.
Second.
I would just say that Ms. Kenely and I um heard from the high school about this in the fall. We were excited about it and spoke to the administrative team, they were also excited, and so we were thrilled to hear back from the high school that they have four students ready to be placed, and it's just a little bit sooner than we expected. So that is why you are seeing that today, not a lot of turnaround time.
Sounds like a great opportunity for us to partner with them, with the students.
It is.
So this is not a roll call vote, so all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And item number eight is our consent agenda, the consent agenda includes approval of minutes, bills, treasurer's report, and personnel recommendations. Is there a request to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Can I roll call vote, please? Barb?
Hi.
Aaron?
Uh, and I say aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine is just a reminder that there is a board meeting reflection and feedback from the February twenty-fifth board meeting. Always fun to read, a reminder to fill out your expense for tonight before you leave. And then I would look for, and item number ten, motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? We adjourn.